Welcome, everyone. I'd like to call to order our regular City Council meeting for Tuesday, January 15th, 2019. Would everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Awesome. Roll call, Sylvia?
Mayor Mays?
Here.
Council President Garland?
Here.
Council Kuiper?
Here.
Council Brous?
Here.
Council Young?
Here.
Council Griffin?
Here.
Council Rosner?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sylvia. We have approval of the agenda.
I move we approve the agenda.
Second.
All in favor of the motion to approve agenda as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have six items on the consent agenda. Approval of the December 18, 2018, City Council Meeting Minutes. Resolution 2019-001, authorizing the city manager to approve expenditure to City of Wilsonville for the Lamont River Water Treatment Plant Surge Tank Project. Resolution 2019-002, appointing the budget officer for the fiscal year 2019, 2020. Resolution 2019-003, communicating controls over fixed asset accounting. You gotta read it, folks. It's riveting. Resolution 2019-004, appointing Courtney Dipel as municipal judge pro tem. And Resolution 2019-005, appointing Richard Basley as municipal judge pro tem. Do I have a motion?
I move consent, second.
Discussion on the motion. All in favor of approving the consent agenda as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, council. Next is citizen comment. An opportunity for anyone in the community to address council. And we're gonna start with our state representative, Courtney Neuron. Welcome, Courtney. So if you'd come up to the table, right there, make sure the green light is on. Introduce yourself, say a couple things, and we'll let you scatter out of here.
I'm gonna stick around.
Oh, great. So who are you?
Hey, I'm Courtney Neuron, and I am the new state representative for this district, this House District 26. Just sworn in on Monday, and I'm happy to be here, thankful to be representing Sherwood and the communities of Wilsonville all the way out to Hillsborough. So I would love to hear from constituents in Sherwood for any needs that they have, any interests that they want me to look into. So I'm available, and I'll be at the state capitol now.
Awesome. Well, congratulations. We're thrilled to have you. Before our meeting today, Representative Neuron was able to spend time in a work session of the city councils so we could understand the committees that she's serving on and her interests as our state representative, and then to be able to hear concerns and ideas, questions from councils. We greatly appreciate that. It does not happen every year, but in the past, we hope to have that happen regularly going forward. So that is, it is awesome that you were able to take the time out on day two of this session, big session down there. And for people that don't know, what committees are you a part of?
Yeah, so I've been a high school Spanish and French teacher in my career, and requested the Education Committee. I'm very concerned about getting our dollars into the classrooms for student success and teacher retention, making sure that we are providing what our schools need for excellent learning. And I'm also going to be serving on the Natural Resources Ways and Means Committee as well as Veterans and Emergency Preparedness. So I'll be on three committees, and I'm interested in many things, though. So kind of looking at the gamut of issues, so.
Awesome. And you got an email address yesterday, so, and it's posted online, so reach out and connect with her.
Yeah, we started scheduling today, so.
Yeah, that's awesome.
Happy to hear from you.
Any other comments or questions? We spent 45 minutes, so we kind of covered the gambit. But thank you so much for being here.
Thank you.
Let's see here, make sure I'm getting this. So Tess, you signed up for the 2040 Plan. Gabby, Larry, Noah. You wanna come all together? Livy, I apologize, Livy.
Hi, City Council members.
Oops, oops.
There we go. You can hold it down.
It won't, there you go.
Alright. Hi, City Council members. Thank you for letting me speak here today about something that is very important to me. My name is Gabby West, and I am 10 years old. I'm here today to talk about how we can honor the legacy of Holocaust survivor Alter Weiner. I came to know Alter when I went to his last presentation at our very own Sherwood Center for the Arts. At the end of his presentation, three people were chosen to ask questions. I was the last person chosen. I asked if he missed his brother and his family members that died in the Holocaust. He answered, "Not a day goes by that I don't think about my loved ones. Life is temporary, but love is forever." I was inspired and wanted to learn more about him. Me and my mom went to his house many times and visited him. Over the course of the next several years, me, my mom, my dad, and my siblings went to his house at least monthly. Alter was very active in our community. The Sherwood Center for the Arts was the last place for him to speak in public, and he also spoke at the Senior Center, St. Francis, the Sherwood High School, and the library. Our ideas for continuing his legacy are a park bench with one of his clothes on it, a peace pole dedicated to him, a room at the school dedicated to him, and an art piece to name a few. Thank you for letting me speak here. Alright, Livy?
Great job, Gabby. Hi, Livy. Hey, you can just, yeah, there you go.
Good evening, City Council and citizens of Sherwood. My name is Livy, and I am seven years old. I am here to speak about my greatest friend in life, Mr. Alter Weiner. He was a very big part in my community and in me. He helped me through many hard times, like when my mom had to go to the hospital and many other things, just through my life. So I am very glad to be here tonight and to speak about him. His favorite thing was to do Scrabble, and I loved playing Scrabble. He has helped me with Scrabble very much, and also with my siblings and with my community. And we are all one big family, the family of the Holocaust. We are gonna spread his legacy all around Sherwood. We have all been and put in his life or just have heard about him and made us new just by hearing about him or by meeting him personally. I am very blessed to be on just meeting him, and I am very blessed to share that knowledge with others. Thank you for letting me speak here tonight.
Hi, City. Good evening, City Councilors. My name is Noah, and I'm four years old. And Alter Weiner was my best friend, and he taught me what's good and what's bad. And I liked playing with him, and me and my siblings discovered that he's a Holocaust survivor, and I love him, and I love him, and he taught my siblings how to play Scrabble.
Did a great job, Noah. Good job. Stephanie, did you want to add anything? What's that word? You're good?
Yeah, I think I'll let the little one speak tonight.
Awesome. Well, that was fantastic. And so as they described, they're gonna continue sharing his story and legacy and passion, and part of it is they are wanting to raise some money to do a park bench in town. And we have a program, and we're gonna connect you with city staff. And to help start... We met last Friday, and I was so impressed with the West family, so.
Yeah, wow.
Great job. That was fantastic. Alright, next, Don and Paula Schaefer. Don Parazzo and Paula Schaefer.
Hello. I wasn't gonna talk tonight, but thank you for hearing us. And I feel honored to be able to talk about Alter and the community. As I walked in the room, I let two students, former students back there, one of which did hear Alter speak at the high school. He spoke three times. I'm thinking that maybe some of you had heard him through Sherwood or other places. This book is a very special book. It's got over 88,000 letters that Alter had received, and he had put them in order of how he helped people, saved people. Education, how it created a spirit of education in students, people who were going to commit suicide that changed their minds. It's very powerful, and it's a message that needs to continue. And I'm very happy that Keith Mays has been the first person to help us along.
Well, I'm Paula Schaefer, and I'm Sherwood resident and Oregon educator, and I'm here to support the West family in their pursuit of keeping Alter Weiner's legacy alive. And just as he has touched the young people, he's touched the teenagers of Sherwood. And this is not even a portion of the 88,000 letters that kids from Sherwood and the surrounding area have written to him, but based on so many things that he really impacted their lives in a positive way. And I had the opportunity this September to go down to Salem when he presented to the Senate Committee proposal for Holocaust education to be mandated in Oregon. And so that's continuing, hopefully, in the next couple of months. But we don't want his story to die along with him. So I'm really appreciative for you to hear from the West family, and there's a lot of other people that aren't here tonight that wanna get behind them and raise money and just keep this message alive that without hope, there is nothing. I'll keep this around. If anyone wants to take a peek at the letters, they're just so touching, and they're just a small tidbit of the impact that he's had on our community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, anyone else like to address council during citizen comments? Okay, we will move on to presentations. Sad and happy part of presentations, and first we'll kind of do the, well, it's sad and happy. Today is the last meeting for Councilor Jennifer Kuiper. And it's also her birthday. She's 29 again, or 39 again?
31.
31. And so do we wanna do anything for that birthday?
Yeah, we have to sing.
So why don't you sing, and I'll go grab something while you, I'm not a good singer. I'm getting out of it.
Wait a minute, Lauren Kuiper, are you out there? Come on up here. Let's start a song for your mom. Christopher, are you out there?
Great.
We can collectively sing "Happy Birthday" to Councilor Kuiper. We'll let the good singer start it off, though.
You're not gonna make it.
Ready?
Yeah.
One, two, three.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear mom. Happy birthday to you.
So tall. So we'll embarrass Jennifer a little bit, and then let her speak for, how long did we agree?
I think I probably cut it.
As long as she wants to talk is the answer. So we have a very nice plaque of appreciation, and I'll read it. On behalf of the City of Sherwood, this is presented to Jennifer Kuiper in appreciation for your years of service and dedication to the City of Sherwood and its citizens. City Councilor 2014-2018, Charter Review Committee 2014, Parks and Rec Advisory Board 2002 to 2008. Thank you so very much. It is, as I like to say all the time, we're a very strong, vibrant community because of our volunteers, be it volunteering in the schools, in church, arts, sports, in the community. And this is, sitting up here, it's a volunteer gig, and it's a little more high-profile. Sometimes it's fun, sometimes it really sucks.
Yeah.
Because you're dealing with fun stuff and not so fun stuff. And sometimes it's reading those really thick books that put you to sleep at night of material that you need to go on up on to do an effective job. So thank you for taking the time, giving of yourself, your passion, your energy. We cannot thank you enough. And thanks to your family and friends, because they also
Yes, they did.
gave up time with you to support you in doing this, so.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Aw, my heart is shaking. Wow, very nice.
So before you get to speak, I'm gonna let our other colleagues, if they want to say anything briefly.
I'd love to have a few words.
Yes.
Yeah, so my family moved here about, almost seven years ago now, to Sherwood, and met Jennifer through the SFA. My wife is very involved in the SFA and some of the local plays, and Jennifer's in the plays. So I got to be friends with Jennifer prior to any of this fun stuff. And so when I declared my candidacy to run for City Council, Jennifer reached out, I think that day, or perhaps even the next day, and said, "Let's sit down for coffee. Let's talk about this," which really meant a lot to me at the time, that somebody would take the time out of their busy schedule to, you know, give me some advice, give me some warning, and just to really, you know, just have a chat and to make sure that I understood, I knew what I was getting into, and to offer that help and that guidance. And so we've served together now for two years. And as the mayor mentioned, it's been good and it's been bad. There have been some rocky times and some very good times. We've done a lot of good stuff, certainly in our two years here together, but also prior to joining council. Council Kuiper was involved in many fantastic decisions that have made the city so much better. I think it is a bit of an unsung position up here as city councilors, and there's a lot that goes on, and there's a lot of impact, personal and, you know, to your families and to your personal life. And Jennifer's handled it so well, and I don't know if everybody understands that. And we're gonna miss you.
Thanks. Very welcome.
Hi, Jen. I too have really enjoyed serving with you for the last two years, and you are just, you keep us grounded. And same with Sean, is when I declared I was gonna run, she reached out to me and said, "Let's meet." And so we met several times before I ever even became on council. She kind of got me up to speed on what was going on. And then ever since being on council, she was just gung ho. If she wanted to meet, you know, with a citizen or somebody, she would say, "Hey, Kim, you wanna come with me?" Or I would say, "Hey, Jen, you wanna come with me?" So we could learn together of the issues that was presenting somebody. But I just, you know, it's been a great two years, and the first year was a little rocky, but you were a great sounding board, and I just appreciate your friendship. And I know you just have a servant's heart, and I know that this isn't your last endeavor in Sherwood, and we will see you, we will see you around.
Thank you, Ken. Thank you, Sean.
Anybody can chime in?
I'll go. You got it, Renee, or me to go?
Go for it.
I'll go. So Kuiper? Oh, I could tell you some stories about this woman. We don't have time for that.
Tape is rolling. We are recording, right?
So I just wanna say that Jennifer and I, I think we first sang together in Sherwood Corral like 10 years ago, maybe longer than that. First, she joined us onstage. I was music director. Yeah, 21. Music director for Sound of Music?
Yes.
She was a nun.
Yeah.
Think about that for a moment. No, she was great. She was a great nun, actually.
Thank you. Yeah.
Yes. And so we've known each other since, and I really had some absolute fun times. And she's not just about the arts, but she's all about community service. You know, I think Kim and Sean said that really well. She's about, you know, being in the community, helping the community, positively affecting the community, and she is so inspiring to the rest of us to be involved. And honestly, she's one of the nicest people I know.
Aw, thank you.
So she and I will forever be friends, and I greatly respect her. Thank you.
I respect you too, Russell.
So I met Jennifer when I moved to Sherwood back in 2006. She served on the Parks Board then, and I was the liaison for an organization at that particular point in time. And then I got to know her better when she and her family took my karate class. We got to know each other at a different level that way. Lots of fun. But the spark that you have, the laughter that you have, your service are above par, and I appreciate you.
Thank you, Renee.
There's no crying until Jennifer starts crying.
It's already happening. It's already happened.
Just wait till I'm done here. We've got to work together for a year, and I have to say, I really enjoyed it. I, you know, me and my wife Sharon, she's in the audience, we've lived in this community since 98, and we're busy with jobs and kids. And this last year, being able to have the honor of serving on council, meeting these wonderful people has just been incredible. And Jennifer, you've been a great help in that process and learning the ropes and the pitfalls and the good stuff, the bad, and I really appreciate it. And I echo everyone else's sentiment here. You're gonna be missed. But you're still around.
I'm still around. Thank you.
We'll get you on another Board or Commission.
Volunteers are always welcome all over this fine community. So what would you like to say before you step down off this dais?
Oh, my gosh. Well, I didn't plan on saying this, but it's, you know, when I, Gabby and Noah and Gabby, Noah, and Livy, right, when they came up to speak, that's really what, that's what I'm up here is all about. And I mean, I could, it was such a great, to see you girls and your little brother wherever he went, I don't know, to come up and speak so clearly and so fervently and with purpose. That's what it means to be in the community. That's what it means to be a member and being a citizen. So you guys are well on your way. You're well, and in what you did, I couldn't have said it better myself, really, 'cause I had something written out here. I will say it. I will take that time to say my thank yous. But I wanted to let you girls know and let your little brother know that you guys are well on your way to doing exactly what you need to be doing to become a really good, strong citizen. You already are. So thank you. Well, first of all, I do wanna say it's been, I have it written down so that I wouldn't cry. So if you guys are taking bets, and I know you are, I've got mine.
Over under, ma'am.
So it has been an honor and a pleasure to serve the citizens of Sherwood as a city counselor. And I personally wanna thank, first of all, my two young adult children that came up to sing who are here tonight, Chris and Lauren. They're both at school at Portland State. And I thank them because many times I would drag them along to one or more of my council duties, and they were always, seemed to be there for me. So I really appreciate you guys. I wanna thank our city manager, Joe Gall, our city attorney, Josh Soper, there you are, our police chief, Jeff Growth, our city recorder, Sylvia Murphy, and each of our city department managers, especially Katie and Kristen and Julia, they're always here, Craig, the unsung hero, Craig Sheldon. Every staff member for your dedicated efforts to proactively managing the many life cycles in city government and your tireless efforts in educating, listening, and responding to our citizens, especially you and me, Sylvia. I still remember when I first started how many questions I had and how gracious you were with me, so thank you. I thank all the members of the boards and commissions who give their time to make a difference in how our city plans for future growth or manages our city finances, how we develop and manage our parks or programming at the library, supporting our cultural arts and our seniors. It's all a part of the living organism that is a thriving community like Sherwood. And this is why I promise I won't cry. I wanna thank this city council for the last two years. It's really been a pleasure to work with each of you. You've contributed and enriched my life in many positive ways, and you have a great team. team, and you're gaining another new, great team member, who's soon to be Counselor Scott. I know he's gonna do a great job. A citizen government run by the citizens, for the citizens, is one of the most powerful tools that we have for collective change. I really do believe that. I know that our community members will continue to take an interest in city government by participating in one of our boards and commissions, or running for office, a city councillor, a mayor, or becoming an ambassador for our city by attending Citizens University. The work is real, it really is. At times, it's difficult, but the results are really visible, and they're really tangible. The restrooms and the cover at St. Elson Park, that was work that I was lucky enough to participate in when I was on the Parks and Recreation Board. The development of Snyder Park, where you see it as now, it used to be just a apple orchard. It's really special. Completion of the Woodhaven Park with angle-in parking, the dedication of the Sherwood Center for the Arts, development of the Citizens University, all these are very real and tangible work that I've been lucky to be a part of, over the years of my involvement as a citizen volunteer. And I don't, I do know that the positive work will continue, and I know it will not be without its bumps and false starts, but I do have faith in the process, and faith in this city, in this council. So, without further ado, adieu, here we go, guys. You ready, Russell? Na 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 na, na 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 na, hey hey, goodbye. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you. All right, so we're gonna, we're gonna do a little transition. Yep. Well, several of us are gonna get up out of the way, and you can just move with us. So, we're gonna do, get Judge Morris up here, and how are you orchestrating this, young sir? I'm a man. I don't know who's going. First, I'm just getting out of the way. I just thank you. I, Keith Mayes, I, Keith Mayes, solemnly swear, I solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution, that I will support the Constitution, and the laws of the United States and the state of Oregon, and the laws of the United States and the state of Oregon, and the laws of the Sherwood, and the laws of the Sherwood. Faithfully, honestly, impartially, faithfully, and impartially discharge the responsibilities, discharge the responsibilities bestowed upon me as a city councillor, and the city councilor, and the Sherwood. I, Tim Rosner, solemnly swear, I solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution, that I will support the Constitution, and the laws of the United States and the state of Oregon, and the laws of the United States and the state of Oregon, and the laws of the Sherwood, and the laws of the Sherwood. Faithfully, honestly, impartially, faithfully, and impartially discharge the responsibilities, discharge the responsibilities bestowed upon me as a city councillor, and the Sherwood. I, Russell Griffin, solemnly swear, I, Russell Griffin, solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution, that I will support the Constitution, and the laws of the United States and the state of Oregon, and the laws of the United States and the state of Oregon, and the laws of the Sherwood, and the laws of the Sherwood. Faithfully, honestly, impartially, faithfully, and impartially discharge the responsibilities, discharge the responsibilities bestowed upon me as a city councillor, and the Sherwood. bestowed upon me as a city councillor, and the Sherwood. I, Don Scott, solemnly swear, I, Don Scott, solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution, that I will support the Constitution, and the laws of the United States and the state of Oregon, and the laws of the United States and the state of Oregon, and the laws of the Sherwood, and the laws of the Sherwood. Faithfully, honestly, impartially, faithfully, and impartially discharge the responsibilities, discharge the responsibilities bestowed upon me as a city councillor, and the Sherwood. Oh, look at that. Wow. Just like that. Thank you, Judge Morris. For, I'm sure not everybody knows who our fantastic judge is, but Jack Morris has been our municipal court judge now for 23 years, next month, and I don't know if we have a longer, certainly not a longer-serving employee of council, but do we have any city employees that currently that are longer than 23 years?
I think the longest is probably 21 years, so I think he actually has tenure.
Wow. So, we greatly appreciate your service to our community, Judge. Thanks for being here today. We have next swearing-in of police officer. Chief?
Thank you, Mayor, council. I'm gonna ask Officer Nicole Kydell if she'll come forward, and she is our newest police officer, and she was hired, oh shoot, I forgot, a month ago, yeah. Yeah, and she filled our final vacant position that we had, so, yeah, we are absolutely thrilled to have Nicole with us. So, why don't you go ahead and sit there briefly, Nicole, and give your quick intro, whatever you want to, and I always put our new folks on the spot.
You can share whatever you wanna share. If it's just first and last name, and I'm glad to be here, then that's okay, but if you wanna give more?
Yeah, I'm Nicole. I'm somewhat local, I grew up in Newburgh, and so, I'm familiar with this city. I went to Western Oregon, and then I was a reserve at the sheriff's office. I've got a couple people back here from the sheriff's office as well. I had heard a lot of good things about the agency as Sherwood. The police department was really appreciated and respected kinda by the community, and they were kind of a smaller agency with more of a family feel, and I've seen that since I worked there, so that was my initial draw.
Awesome. Well, we're thrilled to have you on board, and, yeah, you know, we do our best to support and appreciate our police officers, and, you know, and you got a good chief, and you got some good captains and sergeants.
Thank you. And just before we do this, thank you to everybody that came out in support of Nicole. So, obviously, numbers always are a good indicator of an individual, right? And so, she has a tremendous group of supporters there, so we know, she already has been and will be very successful, and her family's here as well. So, okay, you ready?
Yeah.
Right, right here is fine, we'll see if we can't get the mic to pick some of it up.
He's like, do we have the camera, do we have the camera turned yet? Whichever camera? Oh, there it one, okay.
The one that's on me all the time. Right here, right here. You gotta face me now. There you go. Raise your right hand. I, Nicole Kydell.
I, Nicole Kydell.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and abide.
That I will support and abide.
By the Constitution and laws of the United States and the state of Oregon.
By the Constitution and laws of the United States and the state of Oregon.
That I will uphold and enforce.
That I will uphold and enforce.
The laws of the state of Oregon.
The laws of the state of Oregon.
The ordinances of the city of Sherwood.
The ordinances of the city of Sherwood.
And the rules and regulations of the Sherwood Police Department.
And the rules and regulations of the City of Sherwood Police Department.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Honestly and impartially.
Honestly and impartially.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of the office of police officer.
Of the office of police officer.
During my continuance.
During my continuance.
Therein.
Therein.
To the best of my abilities, so help me God.
To the best of my abilities, so help me God.
Congratulations. Wait, we're gonna get a picture. Background is really bad, let me move. Wait, wait, one more. We need to get the hand set. I'm still up, very good. If I can manage the chairs here. So, I'm gonna have Officer Kelly Bertrand come forward now, and as many of you know, Kelly is our school resource officer, and we have a brand-new program that I'm gonna let him do the bulk of the introduction for, that we're very excited about, and, you know, when
Join me while I do this.
Oh, yeah. Thank you.
Yeah.
And so, when we talk about the future of policing, this is it, right? This is, these are important investments for us to make.
Right there, you wanna go both sides? Where do you wanna put them?
Yeah, just kind of wherever.
So, with that, you're up.
So, I had an opportunity this spring, I, the Sherwood School Board was providing grant money to clubs and activities at the high school, so I thought this would be a good chance to start a cadet program in the city of Sherwood. Had plenty of meetings with the chief, and the captain as well, too, sorry, and the captain to kinda get the details ironed out on how this program would look. Once I got the green light from the chief and the captains to go forth, I wrote a grant for the program to the Sherwood School Board, and was awarded that grant. After that, made an announcement, and we had several applicants. As you can see behind me, we have seven cadets here tonight, we actually have eight in the program. Did a round of several interviews, and these eight right here were the ones that stood out, and were invited to participate in the program. Just briefly what we've been doing, we do a training day every other Wednesday, and it runs all different things that police do. We also have done several day-long trainings where we've had non-school days, where I've been able to do extended six, eight-hour training blocks with the cadets. We, prior to Christmas break, actually had them into our shooting range, and they actually got to shoot guns with us, which I think they had some fun doing. Worked on high-risk traffic stops, handcuffing, building searches, all kinds of stuff, so it's been good for them to learn. The goal is, once we're, get some experiences, to get them out and helping out in community events, cruising, Robin Hood Festival, music on the green, movies on the green, that kinda stuff, so it's kind of our ultimate goal with this program.
Standing.
Yeah, so, at this time, I'm gonna have each cadet introduce themselves, tell their name, their age, and what grade they're in. So, start on the right.
I'm Parker Patterson, I'm senior and 17.
I'm Drew Palet, I'm a senior and I'm also 18.
I'm Logan Richards, I'm a junior and I'm 16.
I'm Samantha Lucio, and I'm a junior this year and I'm 17.
I'm Jordan Lee Dozier, I'm 17 and I'm a junior.
I'm Mason Gardner, I'm 18 and I'm a senior.
My name is Thomas Aruber, I am a junior and I am 17.
Now, some of you, right, helped out at the holiday festival, if I'm not right, how many, everybody? Yeah, so, so that was the first event that you may have seen, some of them out there. So, as I said, this is what we hope to be our future, and the, what really makes this program unique, I think, and we haven't done the research, or the snooping around to see what everybody, there's other cadet programs, but how exactly they're structured, we don't know, but what is unique, and what I was really excited about with this program, is it's another partnership with our schools, right? So, this is a school club, as much as it is a police department program, which is really cool. So, it obviously is a perfect match for Officer Bertrand, but it's also a great opportunity for us to get a group of really high-quality young people, and introduce them, and expose them to what law enforcement's all about, because we're fairly confident that once we do that, they will all want to be police officers. And the hope is that as we work in the coming months to kinda get the reserve program going, hopefully, dependent upon some staff resources and things, but that this will really be the precursor, right? So, you'll start in the, as a cadet, and you'll work your way through to that, and then, once you become 21, you become a reserve force, and then, the obvious next step is that we swear you in in front of city council one day as a regular police officer. So, really excited about this program, and I wanna thank you all for coming, and, any questions, council?
Go ahead.
So, to apply for being a cadet, how long are they in the cadet program? That's one question.
Yeah.
And then, my second question is for all of you, is your intention then to become a police officer? Is that the next step? Okay, cool.
So, to answer your first question, they're allowed to stay in the program up until they're 21. So, the goal is, is as they get older and graduate high school, they can kinda be what we'd call senior cadets, they can come back and help lead the younger cadets, help facilitate training with myself, so I have other people that are helping assist, and just not myself. So, that's kind of the goal, is they graduate high school and move towards that reserve program.
This is fantastic, chief, and Officer Bertrand, to have eight in the first class, that, I know some of your families, parents, and really exciting to see it. What is the, what is the obligation for the cadets? Number of hours per month, or something like that?
So, the hours is just, I require them to attend at least one of the trainings per month. Truthfully, this group you have here in front of you has been phenomenal, and they've come to every training that we've had, have been just ecstatic to be there. Another requirement, though, is grade point average. They're required to maintain a certain grade point average, and if they don't, they'll be suspended from the program until they bring that grade point average back up. So, working in the schools, I have the ability to, as a part of the school district, keep, monitor that and check that, and I have done that, and it hasn't been an issue, obviously, with the Cadet CC here, they're phenomenal students and good kids, so it's not been a problem.
Outstanding. Well, welcome, welcome to the first, first, first class. That's outstanding. Other questions or comments? Thanks, thank you very much.
Thank you.
That is very cool. So, moving on to new business, time selection of council president. And this is not my show on this one, so typically, someone can either suggest themselves, or someone, or a council can suggest another councillor.
And just a reminder for the public, mayor and council, this is a requirement in the charter, that you select a new council president after a general election, which we hadn't ever.
Yeah. Sean's done an outstanding job as our council president, and I greatly appreciate your service this past, this past year in doing that. But you've told me you're not interested.
Correct, yeah. It's been a great honor to serve the city of Sherwood in the role of city council president, backing up Mayor Mayes when needed. I've had a great time going to so many events, reading to the, to the elementary school kids at Hopkins, I did a tree planting there, I'm gonna forget some of these, meeting the students from Japan who were here to visit, got to speak to them, ribbon-cutting for the domestic violence shelter, Family Justice Center of Washington County, so I got to use the big scissors, so that's bucket list right there. It's been great, but yeah, unfortunately, do have some It's been great, but yeah, unfortunately, do have some, some work-life city council balance things. My wife is due with our third child in March, so understanding the added responsibilities of my home life here, I am going to step out of the role of council president and really excited for somebody else up here to hop in and have the same opportunities and honestly fun that I had over the last fourteen months.
Thank you.
I'd make a nomination.
Okay.
I would nominate Councilor Rosner.
Councilor Rosner, are you interested?
Yes.
Any other nominations? Only once? Okay. We have one nomination, that has accepted the nomination. Do I have a motion? Can't remember, it's been a while. We'll do a motion and a vote.
Yes.
So, is there a, Counselor Young, would you like to make a motion?
I make a motion to approve Counselor Tim Rosner for city council president.
Second.
Second discussion on the motion. Thank you for being interested in serving, young man. Any other comments or? All in favor of the motion approving Counselor Rosner as council president for the next year? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously, congratulations.
Thank you.
Next time we come, we convene, seats will move slightly. I don't know yet, I don't know. We'll have to consult with our recorder and figure out just where one sits. So it's on you, Sylvia's responsible for.[716.84][716.87](laughter) Next, under new business, is Resolution 2019-006, accepting the Sherwood 24 Comprehensive Plan Vision. Hi, Carrie.
Good evening, Mayor Mays and counselors. We have a lot to follow here, very exciting things. And I am Carrie Brennicky, Senior Planner. This is Anna Eastmatay with Three J Consulting. We are excited to bring to you the Sherwood 2040 Comprehensive Plan Vision. It's ten pages, not a hundred and thirty, so you're welcome.[754.44][754.47](laughter) So, basically, why do we do a community vision? The community vision sets a tone for our future. It paints a picture of what we want our community to be like in twenty years and the face of all the change that's going on around us. The community vision helps us identify and protect what we love about Sherwood today, envision what we want Sherwood to look like tomorrow, and then update our comprehensive plan to allow us to realize that vision together. So, a robust visioning process that precedes the update of a community's comprehensive plan creates a strong foundation for work through the development of a shared vision statement and shared goals. So, these, the vision statement goals guide the crafting of policy of the comprehensive plan in order to bring the community to their desired future state. A quick note that this isn't a community-wide vision. The vision was done specifically for the comprehensive plan update, so it's a little narrower in scope than you would see in other communities. So how did the shared vision and goals come about? By engaging the community. We went out and asked and listened. We had conversations about the future, and conversations with a lot of people about the foundation elements that make Sherwood unique, desirable, and the place they call home. So we held community conversations, we attended community events, real vision summits, we had an online engagement, and we were all guided by a community advisory committee. So, the community conversations, we went out and talked to a lot of people, very excited people, especially our youth. We talked to the Sherwood High School Leadership Class, we talked to Boy Scouts, we went to the Senior Center a couple times, we talked to our boards and committees, we went to the Chamber in Sherwood Main Street, and overall encountered a lot of community members and asked a lot of questions and listened. We also attended to the community events, the Robin Hood Festival, Music on the Green booth, Sherwood Cruising, and the Community Services Fair booth. Lots of fun. Lots of people wanting to talk. The Robin Hood Festival in particular, we didn't even get that many photos because people were so busy talking to us, they were stopping. People had a whole lot to say about what they love about their community and what they wanted to see in the future. And then, the other thing I wanted to plug was the kids in Sherwood. They had a lot to say, whether they expressed it in drawings, written, or verbally. They love their safe community. Kids, young and old, well, kids aren't old, but kids, young, at in high school.
Older.
Older. Said that, they love their parks and they love their schools. They have visions for the future, some achievable, I believe, in the next twenty years, a community pool, a skate park, a bigger GameStop. Some that the council will need to work on. They wanted homework robots, flying cars, and more sunshine.
Homework robots, alright.
And more sunshine, so we'll work on that too.
I think that's something Salem can help us out.
I think we'll take, we'll get the sunshine done in a few months. We'll take care of that one for him, maybe four or five months.
We hosted two vision summits, a little more on a serious tone, but we're open house and roundtable discussions. One on the development of the goals and one on a conversation about policy considerations and trade-offs. And we also hosted a website and three online surveys and had a lot of contacts through social media. The Sherwood 2040 Facebook page has a hundred and fourteen followers, I would like a whole lot more. So we'll work on that, spread the link. Most importantly, I want to thank our Comprehensive Plan Community Advisory Committee. It's comprised of fourteen citizens and stakeholders, as well as a planning commission, city council liaison. They attended five CAC, we call it the CAC, five CAC meetings specifically on the vision, as well as they attended other meetings on very exciting topics like economic opportunities analysis and housing needs analysis. So they've been working hard. There are lots of them attended community events and community conversations to assist us in taking notes and talking to folks. They provide us input by email anytime we asked. They facilitated tables at the vision summits. And overall, they guided the division, they guided the vision, they developed the community involvement plan, and they developed and reviewed the vision statement and goals. And we couldn't have done it without their participation in service. And I think we have a few of them today. Raise your hand. Have come here? Now, to get on the exciting stuff of the product, I'm not gonna go through page by page. So, we have the Sherwood Comprehensive Plan Update, Vision Statement and Goals. So, throughout this process, in total, we had about a thousand touches by the community on this vision statement and goals, whether online, in person, people we spoke to, surveys. So, a thousand people touched in the community. The vision statement is the vision for Sherwood in the year 2040. It contains an overarching statement and also more detailed statements for specific vision themes. The vision themes, you can see by these icons, cover interconnected topics. They're a reflection of the community priorities from the visioning process, and they're grouped into core areas that will cover topics we are required to address in the Comprehensive Plan Update. Ultimately, we want to form this in a way to build a process where the community's vision, values, and priorities drive the Comprehensive Plan Update, not the way comprehensive plans were done in the past, where the statewide planning goals did. So we're starting off by grouping things up and having the community's priorities come first. So, just because it's a nice feel-good statement, I'm gonna read the overarching vision statement that we came up with in the process. "In the year Sherwood 2040, residents of Sherwood appreciate their safe, connected, family-oriented and family community. Those who grew up in Sherwood stay for family wage jobs and a high quality of life, and those who raise their families here can retire in a place they proudly call home. Sherwood is renowned for its excellent schools, parks, thriving local businesses, small-town feel, and access to metropolitan amenities, jobs, natural areas." So, for each of the vision, in the vision statement, is further broken down into core areas. Those are thriving and diversified economy, attractive and attainable housing, strong community culture and heritage, coordinated and connection, connected infrastructure, healthy and valued ecosystems, and strategic and collaborative governance. All these will cover the sixteen required Comprehensive Plan elements that we are required to do in the Comprehensive Plan Update. So for, in the vision statement, each of these areas also have three or four goals associated with them of the Sherwood's desired state in 2040. So our next step up is the Comprehensive Plan Update. It is coming soon, in the next month or two, following the vision. And what happens is, we want to continue to emphasize that this vision forms the backbone of the Comprehensive Plan. It's going to be the goals of the Comprehensive Plan of our goals and policies document. So it's a great start, we have built momentum. The vision guides the development of the Comprehensive Plan to really get us to that desired state of our community in 2040. That concludes my presentation. I think we have a couple members of the CAC committee want to say a few words.
Yes, okay. So, yeah, step aside and Tess? Welcome, Tess.
Tess Key, Sherwood, Oregon. At first I was thinking this was gonna be a hard act to follow, but what I really see is, this is perfect. We talked about Alter Weiner, we talked about Jennifer Kuiper, we talked about our new police person, our new cadets, we talked about our community. That's what CAC is about. So, in saying that, the reason I wanted to be part of it is because I've lived in Sherwood for forty-three years. I was born and raised in Portland, but Sherwood is home. I think it's really interesting to see, when I first moved here, there was fifteen-hundred people and now we're close to twenty-thousand something. So what I see is, we really do have a cohesive, good community. We've been able to move forward graciously in the last year or so, despite differences in the past. I'd like to see that vision continue. I think planned, organized growth makes that happen. We had some pretty exciting, passionate community meetings. I think as we progress with this vision plan, we'll get more of those, more people involved, because then people start thinking, oh, yeah, this means me. But it was really rewarding tonight to see how all of this can make a community happen. So, I'm glad to be part of this committee, I hope I get to keep doing that, and I think that's about all I wanted to say. I just think it was really nice to see that, starting with Alter Weiner, who believed in humanity and community. And to come to the fruition of seeing the 2040 Vision Plan get on the ground, and the women and men who have done, been on this committee, and the people who have really put their heart and soul into making this vision happen, have done a lot of work. So, I'm hoping that you will take a good look at this and help us move forward. Thank you.
Anyone else to speak on the proposed resolution? Susan?
I didn't know who else was gonna speak, but I just want to tell you that this is a committee that's working. It's got a variety of people. There's longtime residents like Tess or like me, but there's faces, people that showed up at that meeting that I'd never seen before and have been contributing and really putting good input for the community. I was interested in working on this particular committee because I was on the 1991 Committee when we first started out and we're trying to figure out what we were doing. And then, we probably had two thousand, twenty-five-hundred people. So obviously, there's been a lot of changes through the years. But I think another important thing, I was thinking about this, you guys had your goal session this last weekend or whenever it was. I think it's important that our committee understands where, where your goals are too. Not that we're, we would take those goals and just, that's what it's gonna be, but just to have your community input and your input from a leadership standpoint of where you think that the community is going to, because this is still a long process. We're two years out, one year into it, and, and a lot of the nuts and bolts is going to be coming. And I think one of the biggest challenges of the committee was, everybody wanted to start making the rules. You know, we had to keep, you know, up at the very high-level point on what are we gonna do as a community. And I just, I'm really proud of Sherwood. We have a variety of staff people that are really helping guide the process too. And I would encourage, again, it's not too late in the process for anyone watching or even on any of the committees or even anybody considering, you know, we had people that showed up at the vision summit that had been here for two months and they read about it in the Gazette or they read about it in the Archer and all of those voices, because the people that came, that have come to Sherwood, they came here for a reason. It wasn't random. Sherwood's not a random location anywhere. And that kind of input, as far as where they're making their biggest investment in their life for a lot of people, why are they coming to Sherwood? And, and they're stakeholders and, and they're absolutely part of the process. And so, thank you for the opportunity and I say, keep working and keep communicating with us, everybody, not just the electeds, but everybody in the community. And people who weren't in the committee, if they just want to show up at a meeting, it's worthwhile, get a lot of information. Thank you.
Thanks, Susan. Anyone else? Alright. So, the resolution, we got a slightly amended document with some scribbles of some minor changes, but this is the document that we are considering.
Accepting, yes. Considering for exception. The minor alterations we made was, after the packet was sent out, was based on the city council had a work session, had some words they wanted to enhance in the economic development vision and goals.
Awesome. Thank you very much. Questions for Carrie? Awesome. Discussion from council?
You know, I'm just glad we, you know, Susan said we had our goal setting, I mean, a couple weeks ago, and homework robots was one of our top goals. So I'm really glad that the, the community shares that vision for the city. No, I thank you for, for coming and presenting this and thanks to everybody who, who worked on this. And like, like Susan said, this was a very diverse group of, or Tess, I apologize, I don't remember who was it, diverse group of people from the, from the community. And it was, it was built that way on purpose, to get some small business owners, to get people from within the city and who had been here for a while, who are new, who, I think we even got a few folks that are from outside the city limits or, you know, the outside of Sherwood city limits. Because, because it really is about making sure that we're listening to everybody. It's not just focusing on small business or just focusing on the school. This is a vision for the, for the city moving forward. So, I really do thank everybody who did, you know, again, volunteerism is, is the word of the night tonight. And for these folks who put in that extra time and out of their busy schedules to come in and, and contribute to the city. So I just wanted to say thank you to everybody.
You're here. Other comments?
Yeah, I'd just like to echo what Sean said. I really appreciate all the hard work that this committee has, has laid out and laying out this vision and, and doing that work to reach out to the community and understand what the community wants. Susan, you mentioned, you know, the council just had their visioning session, and you know, our job on council is to represent the community, so understanding what the community wants is really important. It's less important about my opinions and more important about what the community thinks. I really appreciate the hard work in, in putting this together, so thank you very much.
Other comments, questions? Motion?
Mayor, if I'm not mistaken, the changes to the resolution were not posted on the website, is that correct? So, that's correct? So in that case, we do need to, our charter does require us to read those changes into the record at this meeting.
So Josh, thank you for volunteering.
Or I can do it.
Carrie has volunteered graciously to do that. And then, and just for council's benefit, then the, the motion would be to approve the resolution with the amendments recommended by staff.
Okay, the amendment recommended by staff.
Carrie, you're so nice to bail Josh out like that.
Or Keith. Under thriving and diversified economy in the vision statement, in Sherwood 2040, the Sherwood economy has grown to include a variety of big businesses and small that offer stable employment opportunities, higher wage jobs, and instead of expand the tax base, we are changing it to balance the tax base.
Okay.
And the thriving and diversified and- And then, in the thriving and diversified, and the goal number one, it originally said, support the growth of local businesses and attract new businesses that increase the city's tax base. It now will read accelerate the growth of local businesses and attract new businesses that will balance the city's tax base. And then, goal number two, it originally read prioritize and promote economic development to increase the city's tax base. Once again, that'll be changed to prioritize and promote economic development to balance the city's tax base. And then further down the same paragraph, it originally said, providing and managing a supply of land to target growth industries and support Sherwood's desired economic growth. That will be changed to manage and supply land to target growth and accelerate Sherwood's desired economic growth. And in, we had a lot of changes of balance and support. And in goal number three, it originally said, plan and provide adequate infrastructure efficiently and timely to support employment growth. That will read, plan and provide adequate infrastructure efficiently and timely to accelerate employment growth.
Great, thanks Carrie. So I think everyone understands Josh's instructions. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve resolution 2019006, accepting the Sherwood 2040 comprehensive plan vision as amended by staff, as presented by staff. Second.
Awesome. Discussion on the motion. All in favor of approving resolution 2019006, accepting the Sherwood 24 comprehensive plan vision as amended by staff's presentation today? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you council, thank you Carrie. Public hearing. Sylvia?
The Sherwood City Council will hold a public hearing this evening to hear testimony on ordinance 2019-006, accepting the Sherwood, excuse me, adopting the new chapter 10.20 of the Sherwood Municipal Code regarding truck routes. The public hearing this evening will be conducted as follows. Staff will present a staff report, questions if any by the council for staff. We will then receive any written testimony. We will then open the public hearing for testimony and the time will be limited to four minutes per person. Any interested person may present testimony. We will then close the public hearing, no other comments will be heard from the public. Final comments by staff, questions of staff if any by the council, and then discussion by the council. This is the first hearing before the city council on this ordinance. Generally, the council will hold two hearings prior to making a decision. A second hearing on this item is currently scheduled for the January 29th city council meeting. However, in accordance with the Sherwood City Charter, council reserves the right to make a decision at the close of this hearing by unanimous vote of all sitting council members. If you wish to speak, please fill out the testimony form and submit it to the city recorder. The mayor will recognize those persons wishing to speak and any questions should be addressed to the mayor. When you come forward, please state your name and address for the record as this hearing will be recorded.
Thanks Sylvia. Joe?
Mayor and council, I will be joined with my colleagues Josh and Julia who have, the three of us have put together this proposed ordinance. A little background, I think the issue of truck traffic on Sherwood's roads has been something we've been hearing from the public. I know the council knows this, there are certain streets in town, Sunset, for example, that has signage that says no through trucks. The reality is, we never have had the ordinance to back up those signage. So I think at the direction of council, you had us explore what other cities do in terms of regulating truck routes. We looked at different alternatives. We had a work session in late November and discussed those, and now we're back with the first reading tonight with a proposed ordinance to regulate trucks in our city. I think the other thing, as we look out on the horizon, the council has adequately said this is going to probably become more of an issue in our community as development happens and congestion happens and road construction happens, trucks as well as others are going to look for other routes through our community. And this is really a safety issue for our neighborhoods and livability. So that's the genesis for why we're talking about this tonight. There is a map that shows the streets that are being proposed to be designated as truck routes. I'm just going to briefly go through them for the public's knowledge, and then we'll open it up for any questions that the council might have. So obviously, Oregon State Highway 99W would be designated as a truck route. Roy Rogers Road, which is a county road. Tuolleton Sherwood Road, which is a county road. Oregon Street between Tuolleton Sherwood Road and Southwest Tonkin Road, also a county road. Southwest 124th, the new Southwest 124th, also a county road. Southwest Murdoch Road, which is a city road, a small portion which continues, turns into Southwest Baker Road until the Clackamas County line, which is a city road. And then finally, Southwest Tonkin Road, also a county road. So those are indicated on the map in red. So we would, through the adoption of this ordinance, designate those as through truck routes. The three roads that are in yellow, Edie, Elworth, and Brookman are county roads that we are proposing not to designate as through truck routes in our community, just for clarity.
Questions for Joe?
Josh, do you have anything else to add?
Yeah, just one thing. So the state law regarding cities creating truck route, routes within their city limits requires that the state or county as applicable consent in writing to the either designation as a truck route or the prohibition of trucks on their roads within their respective jurisdictions. So the state, as I understand it, has already consented to Oregon 99, not surprisingly, being a truck route. We're still working with the county to finalize their approval of the truck routes on the county roads. So that there may be some changes based on what they come back with, and we may not be able to come back in two weeks depending on how long that process takes at the county. But this is the recommendation based on the work session that we had with city council about what those roads would be.
Okay. Is it, as it's written, once it's adopted, it's another thirty days before it's enacted. If we have to, in theory, if all seven council members wanted to pass it tonight, they could. And if there was a change, we'd come back and fix it. Well, based on the county's response, is that what you're saying?
What I'm saying is, is that the state law says that we cannot designate something as a truck route or prohibit trucks on those roads without the county's consent. We don't have that consent from the county yet, so I wouldn't recommend acting on that ordinance before that.
Do we know what their objections might be?
Probably just the holidays.
Or is it just time, we just haven't heard from them?
We just have not, they're not even. It's process. It's just a process issue.
Because it has to go to the county board of commissioners, we're trying to get a sense of what that process is. And I'll just add, my understanding is the ordinance in front of you specifically says that we've gotten approval. So if you were to adopt it tonight by emergency, you would be adopting it with a incorrect finding.
I also don't, there's no reason for it to be an emergency, and I think some of our counselors have mentioned in the past that for transparency's sake and make sure our citizens have time to come speak, if somebody hasn't seen tonight's agenda, they might see it one in two weeks and they wanted to speak on this issue, I wouldn't recommend doing it in one night.
Okay. Other questions before we open for public testimony? Anyone in the committee want to weigh in on this proposed ordinance? Or not, we will close public hearing for today and based on feedback from staff and council effort, we will see this again in two weeks.
Sometime after.
Hopefully two weeks. Same as your report?
Two brief items, because I know we still have our reception for former counselor Kuiper. Believe it or not, with the change of the calendar, we just had our first kickoff for the budget. So the next two and a half months, city staff will be working to develop our proposed budget, which will be released in late April-ish, or early April-ish, I believe. And then it goes to the budget committee in May, and then finally in June, the council will adopt. So that process has just jumpstarted. We had a good session during your council retreat and had a work session about the CIP components of the budget, so that was very good. Happened earlier than in past years, and we appreciate the interest of the council in those important capital improvement programs. So that's starting. And then I want to put a plug for one of the wonderful things that counselor Kuiper was able to spearhead when she was on council was the Citizens University. That was really an idea that she talked about starting, and we are recruiting folks to participate in the spring series of classes. I think we have about a month before the deadline. I think I've got four or five already applications. People read about it in the recent edition of the city newsletter, but I'd like to get more. We'll do some more marketing online on Facebook and other places. But if you know folks that would like to learn the nuts and bolts of their local government, we'll have another opportunity in March, April, and early May to do that. So I just want to put a plug in for that. Yes, counselor Scott?
Throw my name in the list for that?
Apply there, sir. Pretty much a shoo-in, so.
I will.
Excellent. Yes, counselor Rosner?
And I know you referred to our vision and planning session as a retreat, just for the public out there. A retreat for council means coming to this room.
Yes, it's very exciting.
We weren't off at the beach or anything like that, so.
We showed up on a Saturday morning in City Hall.
Yes. And that will actually, the results, some of the results of that council goal setting will probably be on your January 29th agenda resolution, considering the work, the hard work that you did on that, on that Saturday morning here. So that'll be in two weeks.
Goal setting done in January.
Amazing, isn't it? Any other questions for myself, for the department heads that are here?
Happy New Year, everyone.
Thank you.
Thanks, Joe. Next Thursday is the 24th is City Day at the Capitol. League of Oregon Cities organizes it, and a lot of us are going to be there advocating for our community, which is important with the session ahead. And as treasurer of LOC, actually, I'll be meeting with the governor that morning, I guess, with LOC president and CEO and president-elect, so that'll be good to, I have not met Governor Brown before, so I look forward to that. And I'm thankful for the counselors that are going to be able to break away from their time to spend part of their day on Thursday down there. Because we had a chance to review our CIP as a council last weekend work session, it was relevant because we showed up, I showed up at the WCCC meeting, which is the Washington County Coordinating Committee, which mainly focuses a great deal on county transportation. And before them was a vote to advance an update to the countywide TDT project list, which is, what is it? The acronym now is the.
Transportation Development Tax.
Thank you. Transportation Development Tax. And since we had reviewed the CIP list and great deal, we could vote in confidence that it was reflective of what we wanted. And so I appreciate that from council and staff. Other updates from counselors?
I've got, I've got one brief one. It's that time of year again. It's the Sherwood Foundation for the Arts' sixth annual Jigsaw Puzzle Competition coming up on Saturday, February 23rd of this year. The reason I bring it up tonight is that registration for the event did just open today. So if you're interested, you can register at sherwoodarts.org. As I mentioned, this is the sixth annual event. The last five years have been held in the community room at the police station, but due to popular demand, they actually turned people away last year because they had so many people looking to compete. It's moved to the Sherwood Community Friends Church this year, so opened it up to more people. We're hoping to attract people from even farther than we did in previous years. I bring it up again because it's such an amazing accomplishment. Last year's event, we had a couple, a husband and wife team from Hawaii who had no connections to Sherwood, Oregon at all, did a Google search for Jigsaw Puzzle Competition, found our Jigsaw Puzzle Competition, flew to Sherwood for the event. They actually placed quite well as well, so we're hoping to get them back again this year. And also, if you are interested, even though the event is on February 23rd, my wife, who is helping to organize the event, has said that it's almost half full as of today and registration just opened this morning. So there's a lot of repeat competitors. It's getting actually some press nationwide as well. So please do register as soon as possible if you're interested. It's sherwoodarts.org. That's all.
Awesome. Would you like to go next?
I'll be brief. As part of my liaison duties is attending the school board meeting and doing an update with them. Just a couple of things from that meeting, the school board just completed their fiscal year 2017-18 audit and published their CAFRA report. They got a clean opinion, which is great. And one thing that was really fascinating, I didn't know this, they actually create their CAFRA reports in-house. They don't hire a consulting firm to do that, which is amazing, and they got awards for it. So they did a great job on that. Also attended the Main Street Board Meeting last week. There's going to be a general meeting of the Main Street Group on the 17th at the Rebecca Lodge. I encourage business leaders and community to attend that. They are, one of the things they did mention is, for those of you who saw it, the old engine show is coming back this year, which is great. For anyone who got down and got to see those old steam engines runs, it's a lot of fun. And they're hoping they can time that with the first day of the farmer's market as well. They thought that was a great synergy when they did those together. And then they're still looking for volunteers to serve on the board. They have some openings on their board for those that are interested out there. And that's all I got.
Would you like to go next?
So I don't have a lot either, but the library advisory committee meets actually tomorrow night, but Adrian does a really good job of keeping us informed and sent out this wonderful one and a half page note of everything that the library has, and it's something for everybody. But at the top, McKnight, some exciting news is that through a grant from the Cultural Coalition of Washington County, they are going to be able to put on two ukulele workshops. So those who want to, and it's pretty fun. My daughter actually learned how to play the ukulele, and so it's really kind of cool to see that. So there's an April 27th for youth and a June 26th for adults, if you want to learn how to play the ukulele. But there's really is something for everybody. And then today, she sent out a note to the advisory committee that one of her staff had passed on to her, that a little girl was standing in the lobby waiting to come into the library with her dad, and she walks in and, oh, it's so beautiful. So this little girl, first time in the library, and how beautiful the library was. So I thought that was pretty cool. The Friends of the Senior Center will actually meet next week, so I don't have a report there. But I did want to mention that our new chamber director is in the audience tonight, so Cory Kearsley is here. There's a lot that's going on in the chamber world. The next meeting is actually the February 5th, but on February 4th, there's a meeting about Scotland. So I think, you know, that these two went to China with the Chamber of Commerce. The next trip is going to be to Scotland. So there's an informational meeting on Monday, the 4th, at the Rebecca Lodge at 5:30. And I think that's it.
Doobie?
I'll go. I just wanted to say briefly that I'm really honored and humbled to be sitting up here representing the people of Sherwood and this great community that we all call home. So I want to thank you all for that opportunity. And then I also especially want to reach out and thank in advance for the next four years, my wife Teresa and my children Allison, Lindsay, and Connor, who are obviously going to be putting up with me being away more and being busier, and I just want to appreciate them for that. And I look forward to getting to know many of you. Please reach out to me. I want to hear from as many of you as possible and really get to know what you and what you're passionate about, and so I can help work for you people of Sherwood. Thank you.
All right. So we haven't had any police advisory board meetings in December, and then our one next week is also canceled, so I'll update on that later. I did attend cultural arts last night for Jennifer Kuiper, and that's a really fun, lively group. But they talked about their public art master plan, and Shanda talked about a grant possibility that she's going to be writing to sort of get that plan to finish, to finale. So hopefully we'll get that. She was over the moon excited that the Bubble Man Show this past weekend was. She was over the moon excited that the Bubble Man show this past weekend was sold out, waiting list of people, sixty people long on the waitlist, they were able to get them all in, but it was just, I guess, phenomenal. So, they have five more, I think, matinee, things like that going on, and hopefully, they'll sell all those out. But people, it's pulling people from everywhere. Like, the Bubble Man was like 30% from Sherwood, which means 70% are coming to our art center from, from other places. We got an update on the gala that's being planned for April 26th. It sounds like some great entertainment, a great theme, but I have been sworn to secrecy. So, I can't tell you until January 30th. They will make a big announcement, and then, tickets will go on sale February 15th. And the YMCA, I'm the liaison to that board of managers, the YMCA's gone through some renovations. I am going to be doing a tour tomorrow to see what's taking place over there, so I'll have an update on that. And I won't be at the city day at the Capitol because Community Development Block Grant has their all-day presentations that day that will be reviewing applications. So, I will be in Hillsborough for the day.
Pretty good excuse.
I just got a couple of things. So, went to the Parks Board Meeting last Monday night. The big ticket, the big item there is we're starting work on the Parks Master Plan. We started to review some other plans that other communities have done. Westland has kind of a draft plan that, on their website right now, that's really, really nice. It's really great. By a consulting firm we've used before, a long time ago. So, they're looking into that. And the skate park bids, do we have, did we get an update? Not yet. So, I know that we're still working on the price of concrete, you know, that greatly increased the bid prices that came back. They're working through some things. Craig is working his magic with his magic wand of budget reduction, and he's going to figure out some masterful way. I'm building you up, Craig.
High expectations.
I know, high expectations, so.
You're going to snap your fingers and alter the price of concrete?
That's right. That would be amazing. I wanted to mention that Sherwood Foundation for the Arts, their show Little Shop of Horrors opens on Friday night. And we borrowed our plant from somewhere in Washington. We were at Waitress at the Keller, and Linda Henderson is in line for the Lou, and behind her is a woman, and they started talking about the stuff that they do. And she said, I have a plant. If you'll come up and get it, you can have it or borrow it. So, it's such a, such a cool thing when all of that comes together. That opens up this weekend, it's this weekend and next weekend, and the tickets are selling really fast. So, it's going to be such a great, great show. Let's see. Also, Thursday night, the Robin Hood Festival Association is having their meeting on Thursday night at 7:00 PM at the Masonic Lodge. It's always a great time, and right now is the time to really get into volunteer mode as the big plans come up. There are going to be some changes to the festival, some new things tried, new ideas, and you can be a part of that and come add to your collective. Sandy's like, no, there's not going to be anything changing. What are you talking about, Russell? I'm beat, I'm building you up, Sandy. We're, it's, that's right, we need volunteers, ultimately. We always need volunteers, right? And let's see, the other thing I want to talk about is, oh, is, can I talk about the Police Department Awards Banquet thing? Is that open to anybody who wants? It's not? Never mind, forget I mentioned it. I'm done.
You can talk about the gala that's in May, if you like.
Well, that, oh, and that's not till May, but the awards banquet is a closed deal? Oh, I didn't know that. This ticket, I could sell this ticket on eBay.
You're losing your ticket, you just don't know it yet, it's going to be being recalled or confiscated.
Sorry about that. So, yeah, the gala is in May, I was just going to talk about that.
So, with that note, thank you, everyone. We're going to adjourn to the reception for our outgoing counselor. Good night.